We're about to get started. It's seven o'clock.
That's where we are now.
Okay, so we're done? I can go home now?
No.
All right, good evening. It is 7:01 PM on Tuesday, May 17th, 2022. And I will call this regular meeting of the Dickinson City Council to order. Item one, call to order and certification of quorum.
Mayor Shawn Skipworth.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
President.
Simpson.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Brantley.
Here.
Councilmember Decker.
Here.
Councilmember Linton.
Here.
Thank you. I'm to the invocation. Councilman Simpson, would you mind leading us?
Let us pray. God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for every good and perfect gift that comes from above. We thank you for the opportunity to gather due to the work of the city. We ask a blessing upon its citizens, its city staff, elected officials, and those who are connected to the city, this county, this state, and this nation. Keep us under your protection and care. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Can you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? First, the United States flag. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas pledge. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. Item four is proclamations, of which we have no proclamations this evening. Item five is public comments. Members of the public are invited to give comments at this time lasting not longer than three minutes. Comments may be general in nature or may address a specific agenda item and should be directed at the entire council, not individual members of council or staff. Any speaker making personal attacks or using vulgar or profane language shall forfeit his or her remaining time and shall be seated. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council may not deliberate. We do have one speaker signed up this evening. I believe that's Mr. Jason, is that Elliott? Or did I misread that? Okay. My handwriting is, well, I feel you. I feel you. If you would just come up and give your name and your address, sir.
Thank you, council. My name is Jason Elliott, 2209 Gil Road. I'm the rooster guy. So I'm just, I think I'm just gonna keep coming back. It's 4:45 AM, seven days a week. You know, we've talked to the neighbors and they said kinda sorry, so we're just kinda hoping maybe an ordinance or something may pass where in the city we're kinda outlawing roosters. I feel like we're kinda live too close to each other now and the city's growing up and we're not really in the country anymore. So just asking for help and I'll just kinda keep coming back and appreciate it.
And if I can, Mayor, just real quick, is that we have an item on seven, but there's a lady right in the corner over there, Ms. Shawna Bello. And I'd like for y'all to get together and exchange some information because she's in charge of code enforcement and we'll all have a meeting together as a staff and get this worked out for you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. That'll take us to item six, announcements and presentations. Announcements concerning items of community interest. No action will be taken or discussed. Councilmember comments regarding items of community interest in accordance with the Texas Government Code, Section 551.0415. And we'll start with item 68, council comments. And so we'll, y'all, I won't put you on the spot, Fred. We'll start with Councilman Simpson. Simp-sen, not Sim-sen, even though she's not here, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, city staff, citizens, welcome. I would like to start off my council comments by extending condolences to the family of Commissioner Ken Clark. Commissioner Clark and I worked together on the Galveston County Long-Term Recovery Group right after Harvey. And so I got an opportunity to work with him pretty closely. He was a fierce advocate for his constituents. And you knew where he stood on every item that we deliberated on that, on that Galveston County Long-Term Recovery Group and making sure that the citizens of Galveston County got help as much as we could provide after Hurricane Harvey. So I extend my condolences to his family. Since we last met, I attended the Dickinson ISD Foundation Gala. Great, great organization, great thing to be supporting. Also had an opportunity to attend the Dickinson Youth Action Council as well. It's great to see young people interested in municipal government. Also this morning, attended the Houston-Galveston Area Council Meeting. Pass the packet down. That meeting was the last meeting where Councilmember William King served as chair. He got a standing ovation. They will have a meeting next month in June to actually honor his service to the Houston-Galveston Area Council. One item of note, it'll probably be coming from the Communication Department. There is a transportation committee that is going to try to plan out transportation for the entire 13 governing region of the Houston-Galveston Area Council. And the way the citizens can participate in it is through a survey. A survey will go out where you can put your zip code in and tell them what transportation issues matter to you, along with neighborhoods, sidewalks, roads, drainage. We've talked about this before at city council. We have a $20 million budget with an $80 million street problem. So in order to fix it, we're gonna need the assistance of some of these bigger organizations or we could raise taxes and I don't think anybody likes that. But that is something that the citizens can do as they plot out what's going on with transportation, streets, drainage, infrastructure for the next 25 years. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson.
Yes, good evening to everybody that's here. First off, I'd like to start by welcoming the two new city council members. Unfortunately, one of them had something else to do. Good luck going forward. Look forward to serving with y'all. It's, you know, it's a change to have so many new faces up here at this council at one time. So anyway, like I said, I look forward to working with y'all. Thank you.
Councilman Brantley.
I wanna start to welcome to those that are in attendance tonight. Thank you for being here. It's truly an honor being trusted to serve the city of Dickinson as the city's chosen representative for city council position four. I especially want to thank God, my wife and kids for supporting me, all those that have supported me through this journey, especially Dickinson Little League and Dickinson Girls Softball, and the citizens that voted for me. I commit to serving the city of Dickinson and this representative body with the same honor and vigor that I have shown throughout over 20 years of community volunteerism, most recently through Dickinson Little League District 14 and the Dickinson Economic Development Corporation. I'm very proud of what those organizations have accomplished in the past several years. I only pray that I have made and continue to make positive impacts on those organizations. I commit to bringing my experience through both civic engagement and through my professional success to this governing body and to the citizens of the city of Dickinson. I intend to serve with diligence and integrity while being contemplative in each decision faced during my tenure. I intend to bring fresh perspectives to this council and to work hard in cultivating relationships with my fellow council members to assist us all to move forward and accomplish the goals and expectations of those that we are entrusted to serve. I also intend to help foster an environment where we honor and celebrate our community's volunteers who devote their time and service to our community through boards and commissions. Again, thank you all to the citizens of the city of Dickinson for this opportunity and I promise to work hard to fulfill your expectations through diligence, integrity, and honor. Thank you. Oh, wait. My predecessor, I forgot I made notes. My predecessor told me that I had to make sure that I announced that, very proud to announce that our first five blue herons have been installed at City Hall, the boat dock, the school administration building, Paul Hopkins Park, and the railroad museum. And that there are 22 new herons that have been acquired and are on order to be installed throughout the city. So I think that's pretty exciting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Decker.
Good evening to the new people here. Hope to see you back. Congratulations to the three new council people. Be very nice working with y'all. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Linton.
Howdy. I'll keep it short and improvise it. It seemed to do better that way. Just wanted to thank the citizens of the city of Dickinson for putting their trust in me. I look forward to doing my very best. I read boring technical documents for a living at NASA, so I seem to be in the right place. And I did read all 201 pages of the agenda before the meeting. But thanks to the citizens of Dickinson and also to the city council members, I'm looking forward to working with each of y'all to improve the lives of the citizens of this community, including our own. And I'd also like to just say thanks to Mr. King. I talked to him extensively before I came up here and I look forward to trying to continue the good work that he has done for the council. And that's it. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. And welcome, everybody. I'm glad to see everyone here. Like to congratulate our new members of council. Each of the, thanks for agreeing to serve. It is not easy and thanks for not being deterred. So we're glad that you're here. Fred, you're gonna have to probably play the National Anthem for us at some point, you know, on sax. He plays saxophone, if you don't know.
As long as it's not a free gig.
Okay, well, yeah. Well, you know, you get $75 per meeting, not to exceed $1,800 a year, so that's what we'll give you. But we're glad to have everybody here. And congratulations to Councilman Simpson on being the new mayor pro tem. I'd also like to thank the outgoing members of council. They're not here, but again, it's, serving is not, is not easy. It takes up your time. You're always on alert. You have to pay attention and I know that it's difficult. And so anybody that sets up to serve, you know, it's a, it's a hard thing to do and often, you know, without, thank, without thanks. So thanks to everybody that did that. Also like to say a few, a few things about staff. So talking about, I wanna congratulate the staff and applaud them on some efforts with streetlights. I know, I see our assistant city manager back there. I know he's been working with TNMP on that, which is not easy to do. So especially thank, thank him for those efforts and I'm hoping we'll see some kind of movement on that relatively soon. Also wanna thank the efforts on Shadow Lane to get that repaved here this week. I know, yes, Nina's here from the Bay Animal Service and she told me on Sunday how happy she was about it. So I told her, you know, sucking up doesn't help, so. But, but no, it did really need it and I appreciate staff working hard to get that together. I also wanna kinda congratulate the people that graduated from college here this past, this past weekend at a lot of area colleges and also the people that are about to graduate from high school coming up. Congratulations to the season. I hope you, I hope you have a good summer and you get ready for the next chapter of your life, whatever that may be afterwards. So if you see somebody graduating, congratulate them. Give them a dollar. They're gonna need it, right? Anyway, that'll get you about a tenth of a tank of gas right now. So moving on to our next item, item 6B, the city manager update. I will turn it over to our city manager, Theo Malanzan.
Mayor, council, thank you very much. Before we get so enthralled in our flood mitigation projects, I think we have some special guests from the animal services, Bayou Animal Services that have a very special staff announcement in regard to, I think they brought a special guest with them as well. So I don't know, Nina, would you like to come on up and introduce our, is it our pet of the month available for adoption?
Available for adoption. This is Maverick. He's three and a half years old. Okay. He's already altered. He is heartworm negative. He's super sweet. This is after only two days of working with him. He's a shelter dog. You would never believe it because he's so, he's relaxed. He's chill. For treats, mostly just for treats, to be honest. Hear Maverick. I didn't expect to be holding a microphone. Sit.
Good boy.
Yeah, good boy. That's just after two days of working with him, so he's obviously very smart. Please spread the word. We have 64 other dogs at the shelter, too, that need a home. Thank you.
Yeah, I know he came by City Hall on Friday and he is, he is pretty sweet, so. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Outstanding. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Council, one of the big things I wanted to bring up to you guys is working with Hewitt Zollers and public management in regard to multiple projects around the city. I wanted to give you the update on that. We are, after this council meeting, the goal will be to, once we execute the, excuse me, accept the bid from the contractor that we have, is to go to a notice to proceed with said contractor on the West Gum Bayou project, which is gonna have the two detentions and widening of the bayou. That's gonna really help with the flood mitigation around the high school and middle school on the east side. And then the goal is that to have that project completed by the end of November of this year. It's gonna be a major dirtwork project, so we're looking forward to that. Also, just wanted to let you know that we are working on the Pin Oak and Nickelstone projects as well to get the maintenance, the maintenance bond language worked out and punch list on Nickelstone completed. Hopefully I can get y'all a slightly different update on those projects next month. I'll keep you informed of that. One of the big things I'm extremely proud of is in our staff in regard to the buyout and acquisition program. The, we received some great accolades, not just from, from, from media sources, but also from the state of Texas where they actually brought staff down to, to work with jury and members of our community development team to work with League City. And for League City to see kinda how we rolled out our public comment period because the state, state was extremely pleased with that portion of how we rolled it out. So it's great to be seen as a best practices organization for this project. Also, just wanted to let you know that we are working on the Pin Oak and Nickelstone projects as well to get the maintenance, the maintenance bond language worked out and punch list on Nickelstone completed. Hopefully I can get y'all a slightly different update on those projects next month. I'll keep you informed of that. One of the big things I'm extremely proud of is in our staff in regard to the buyout and acquisition program. The, we received some great accolades, not just from, from, from media sources, but also from the state of Texas where they actually brought staff down to, to work with jury and members of our community development team to work with League City. And for League City to see kinda how we rolled out our public comment period because the state, state was extremely pleased with that portion of how we rolled it out. So it's great to be seen as a best practices organization for this project. Also, just wanted to let you know that we are working on the, working on preliminary design and, and getting the environmental assessments completed for the Hughes Road mitigation project. That's our $49.7 million project, of which $49.2 million, 99% is being paid for through federal funding. So, so we are working on that as well. I don't know if any of you, I don't know if we did the formal introduction, but we have Catherine who's with Hewitt Zollers here this evening. Why don't you come on up and come say hello? I don't know if you had a chance to meet. I know we have three or two here right now, but we have new council members and this is our engineering liaison.
Hi, everybody. I'm Catherine Mears with Hewitt Zollers. Previously, y'all have met Joe Myers. He retired and so I'm new and improved, taking his place, picking up the reins and trying to move everything along for you. I know that we've got quite a few things going and we're trying to keep everything moving and in progress. And between Theo and Chase and Alexis, y'all have a great team keeping everything going here. Y'all have any questions for me?
Does anyone have any questions?
One, one quick one. Would you, could you update us a little bit on, is it Oak Park Drive, the one by the, the bus, bus area for the school?
Absolutely. That's on your agenda tonight to award the contract to the contractor. We received bids on that. We received three bids. The low bidder is a company called Green Dream out of the Dallas area and we've checked their references. It seemed to be a great contractor. We coordinated with WCID and they went over there really quickly and replaced a water line in advance of this construction because they realized if the road's gonna get torn up, we wanna get our line out of the way. So they did that in advance for us. You might have seen that work going on in the past couple of weeks. So we, if that is approved tonight by council, I believe we're gonna have the pre-construction meeting early next week. I can't remember which day. I apologize.
Probably a Wednesday is a good guess, maybe?
I'll confirm that with you and get with you.
Yep. Thank you very much, then. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Yes. One question. With the contracts let, how long is this project gonna take?
Oak Park, we have, I believe.
I think with the way we have the contracts set, we're supposed to be right before, sorry, it's supposed to be right before the start of school. So it should be, it should be around August, mid-August, I believe?
It's a pretty short project. It's just about two blocks, so it should move pretty quickly. But yes, the idea is for it to be done before school starts.
Be finished or be started?
Finished.
Finished, okay.
Yeah, we're hoping to start next week. The pre-construction meeting will be next week, which is the start.
That's what I was asking when it was gonna start because I knew school was letting out, I think, next week, so.
We timed the project to be right as school is ending and to be done by the time school reopens.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a question for Theo, not necessarily for Hewitt Zollers. Caroline Street, I know that's been put out for bid. Any updates on?
So it hasn't been put out for bid yet. That's part of our larger package of the, of.
The street improvements project. It's a kind of a generic name. We have 12 different short street segments that are in that project that is in design right now. We just got the survey back, so we're in the very early stages of design and we can give you a more complete update on that, too. But it's coming.
Yeah, so just as a reminder, what we did was with the, with ARPA funding, plus we'll be working with the EDC because some of the streets and drainage improvements will be helping businesses is to try to put together funding so that we can do a very large project, kind of for a lot of the streets, kinda that would help the businesses right around City Hall here, right across State Highway 3, all the way to the old Ziegler's property. And then also for us, we also added a couple of other streets with some major traffic, one of them being Caroline. So, so we're in that design phase and that, that's how we're planning on funding it, those ARPA funds and, and for, for a few of the businesses that needed the help pretty badly, so.
Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Absolutely. Y'all always feel free to reach out. Theo's got my information.
You've got a few more items, correct? Few more items?
Just a couple of things I was gonna bring up to you guys. Just wanted to let you know is that we are, we're closing up shop on the internship application process. So we're actually going through the, the process of putting together groups of applicants for each department that, that requested an intern. I don't know the total number of applicants. Do you have any kind of guess at that? I know we were well over 100 for eight positions.
Probably around 150.
We have about 150 applicants for eight positions. So it's, this is very highly competitive, very exciting to pique kids' interest at, at the ISD to wanna be a part of what we're doing here. So that's pretty outstanding, if I can say so. And good job to our staff to reach out to the school, working with the school and to get that word out. So I just wanna let you know at least 150 kids are very interested in, in working for you, so. Other than that, we did talk about Oak Park, so that's coming up there. But yeah, I just wanted to let y'all know is that we are working on the next set and I, working with public management, I don't know if there's anything, Michael, is there anything you wanted to update on? I was gonna talk a little bit about our next set of project for the next mod and then HMGP. Would you take a moment, maybe just kinda say where, you know, kinda where we are on a couple of those grants as well?
Yeah, so I mean, the big, Michael, we go, I'm with public management. We're a grant administration firm. We're working with the city on a lot of grants that are active and some that have been closed out. The big, the big real grant that's about to move into action right now is that buyout acquisition program that you brought up earlier. You know, we got a bunch of public comments from the public, which, which is great. And so it's just filtering through all those and being able to work with the city staff to be able to put that information back out to the public. Outside of that, you know, I think the HM, or the mod that, that's on the agenda tonight for, for council and same thing with y'all's ARPA funds, there's a lot of opportunities for the city to be able to use that for, of course, roads or other needs. So look forward to hopefully having the opportunity to work with you all on that.
Yep. And if I can just say, it's been really great working with public management. We were putting together, the goal through these federal fundings is to continue reworking West Gum Bayou further west. Also to work with Moore's Edition where we have major flooding issues because of a shallow pipeline. Some areas, it says shallow is three inches below the ground, so creating a siphon that would allow that water to get from Moore's Edition to Benson Bayou and then to channelize and dredge Benson Bayou to Dickinson Bayou to be able to handle that, that flow of water properly is a major part of kinda what each different segment of what we're trying to put together as a bigger project to help different areas of town. So just, you know, stay on the lookout. We'll, we're gonna continue hunting for these flood mitigation funds and, and work toward, work toward more resiliency through the process and have federal funding do majority of that.
Do you have any questions for Michael? Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay. Thank you. Community events? You didn't?
I personally don't have any. I don't have any of this one.
We'll leave that there. Move on to item seven, public hearing and action items from public hearing. Item 7A, conduct a public hearing concerning a request amending sections 5-20 and 5-21 of the Article II Building Codes of Chapter 5 Buildings of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dickinson, Texas by adopting the 2018 additions of the International Business, I'm sorry, the, the, adopting the 2018 additions of the International Buildings Code, Residential Code, Mechanical Code, Plumbing Code, Energy Conservation Code, Fuel Gas Code, Existing Building Code, Property Maintenance Code. Each is published by the International Code Council, Inc., and the 2017 edition of the National Electric Code as published by the National Fire Protection Association, providing certain amendments to the codes adopted, providing a penalty not to exceed $2,000 for each violation, and making other provisions related to the subject. So we'll have the staff presentation first. Who is presenting on this today?
Speaking on behalf of this one here, just so you know, one of the big things and it really came to the attention of staff as we were working with Fire Marshal Shawna Bello. One of our big issues as we're going through and trying to obviously do our certificates of occupancy and to obviously hold accountability for, for building standards in the city, one of our biggest problems is, is that our fire code is, is up to date 2018, but we had never updated any of the other codes that actually correlate. They're all model codes across. So if you're, you're working 2015 codes for everything except for fire code, well, they've updated some things in the fire code that are incongruent with, say, the 2015 model codes as adopted by the International Code Council. So what we wanna do at this point in time is to get everything up to 2018 so that we don't have one code that's in 2018 and every other code in 2015 with the National Electric Code being, what we did was we worked with, with our staff and also I think we worked, it was Safe-Built involved as well, Chase and this? Yes, so, and Safe-Built, which is our, which is our third-party inspector to say, okay, wait, for the electric code, which one is the most compatible with the 2018 codes for the electric code? And that was the 2017 edition of the electric code. So now we won't have any of the loopholes and some of the things that happen whenever you're, when you're sitting on two different standards. Basically, you have fire on one with every other code in the other. So really probably all these others should have been adopted with the fire code going up to 2018 back when it was adopted. And so now we just wanna try to get everything on the same one. So that's kinda where we're at, so.
Okay. Thank you. We have no public comments signed up for this item. So we also, there's no applicant, so no applicant rebuttal. And so I forgot to call the public hearing into session, but we'll adjourn the public hearing at 7:29 PM. Move on to item 7B, an ordinance of the city of Dickinson, Texas amending sections 5-20 and 5-21 of Article II Building Codes of Chapter 5 Buildings of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dickinson, Texas by adopting the 2018 additions of the International Buildings Code, Residential Code, Mechanical Code, Plumbing Code, Energy Conservation Code, Fuel Gas Code, Existing Building Code, Property Maintenance Code. Each is published by the International Code Council, Inc., and the 2017 edition of the National Electric Code as published by the National Fire Protection Association, providing certain amendments to the codes adopted, providing a penalty not to exceed $2,000 for each violation, and making other provisions related to the subject.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Wilson, a second by Councilman Simpson. Is there any discussion?
Just a question out of curiosity. Is there any way that we could ever take action that we just always keep up to date with the latest code? Like, or do we have to do a resolution every time they update the code?
Legally, I would probably say you need to update it every time they update it, correct?
And the reason is because before you do an update, like tonight, we have to have a public hearing for it. So, I mean, essentially every three years, the ISEC updates their codes, so you won't be making an amendment for three years at least. I think the 2021 additions are out now. Some cities have adopted those, but most people are, are sitting at 2015, 2018 additions. But to answer your question, it's because you have to have a public hearing every time.
Other questions? Okay, other questions?
I had one real quick. Yes. I had sections 520 and 521, and the addendum was mentioning 521 and 522. I read all three, of course. Is it 520 and 21, or 21 and 22? It's minor, just curious.
Or?
Either one, when you adopt it, we'll make sure that it matches up whatever your city code is now, because it's probably just, it was probably just scrim or error on that, whatever the number was.
Just FYI.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions or comments?
Yeah.
Councilman?
It is 21 and 22, 21 and 22.
Okay, so, let me ask, I'll get, I'll get you a second. Do you want to amend your motion to say, to approve 21 and 22?
So will be.
Okay.
I'll amend my second.
Okay. Councilman Brantley.
Theo, you may have contemplated this, I don't, and it may not even have an effect, but if you look at the 2017, based on the old codes, the number of homes that were repaired based on those codes at that time, will this have any negative impact on homeowners that, should they have minor damage to their home, then be required to make an adjustment or a repair as a result of us changing to, or updating the building code? Is that going to have any significant effect to even minor repairs that would cause them to bring something up to code?
No, so what you're going to see is, in these codes, as, and even the International Code Council kind of, you know, deals with grandfathering situations, and what, what that rule is, is basically, if you have repairs that are under the 50% threshold of the appraised value of the property, if you're doing less than, then, you know, there's a lot, all of a sudden, once you get over 50%, you have to come into compliance with every single code that you're dealing with. Now, that doesn't mean that on the minor stuff, that you, you're not supposed to get inspected and permitted and need to meet your health and safety standard, but what you're, a lot of what you're talking about, like the minor repairs, you're not, you're not having to bring the whole house into code because of a minor repair. Now, if you get over 50, let's say you have an appraised property of, say, $400,000, and you have over $200,000 in repairs that need to be done for some reason, now you do have to come up to the code, but the internet, but that would be the case even like now, where if that happened, they would have to come up to 2015 code. The, a huge portion of the housing stock in Dickinson does go back to the 60s, 70s, and 80s, and so anything like major, major repairs would have to come up to the 2015 code, and what we're doing is now is we're just going to move that up to the 2018 code to meet some of the, especially on, especially for a lot of the safety portions of electric and so forth.
And, sure, so, and, and I'll go a little further, because I understand what you're saying about the 50% rule, right? However, I worked, I worked in 2003, to 2005, I worked the three hurricanes in Florida. And so, is the, the IBC code is also trade-specific, correct? So, and that's more what I'm talking about, right? So you have some damage to some shingles on your roof, and the old code said that you could still use composition shingles, and the new code says you have to use architectural shingles. So rather than being able to repair your composition shingles, now we have to bring that up to code, and a $1,000 repair becomes a $10,000 repair, and that's more what I was talking about.
Yeah, and so to that effect, what you'd be dealing with is, is that, remember, if you're trying to repair a home versus a complete remodel renovation, that's when you're going to be pulling everything into code, and we're not going to ask you, oh, you have some shingles off your roof, now you need to take your entire roof off to now meet this new architectural roof, you know, you're doing a repair, you can easily prove that you had a shingled roof. You had a few shingles off. Now, if the roof was completely removed and the water damage required, you know, all that stuff, and now the house is over 50% damaged, now you will be triggering that new code with that higher standard for the architectural.
So it's not-
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So it's not trade-specific? It's based on the value of the home, correct?
Yeah, basically. The idea today is that for, for that, yes, I mean, it's going to be based on value of the, I mean, anything with the International Code Council, you're not going to have to bring your entire house, like a roof. Repairs are not going to be as, you know, it's not going to trigger, you're not going to have to redo your entire roof because you had small damage on your roof. It's going to be based on, at the value point, 50.1%, at that point, yes, you will have to bring the entire building up to code, so it's going to be, yeah, it is based on the value of the repair to the home itself.
And Councilman, depending on the situation, on, on natural disaster-type destruction or damage, then you're going to fall more into what they call a non-conforming, when you talk about zoning, it's non-conforming uses, it's similar type of thing here, where like if you had a, like to say, you had a fence that was destroyed by storm, and you went up and say it was, you know, done under a 2015 version of the code, something changed between 2015, 2018, you're allowed to build that fence up to the 2015 standard, but you can't expand the use of that, expand the, you know, the dimensions of that fence. So that's a similar kind of application here for these codes.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
No.
All right, hearing none, we'll take this to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item 8, the consent agenda. The following items are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items unless the council member requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and discussed after the consent agenda.
Motion approved.
Second, a motion approved by Councilman Wilson, second by Councilman Simpson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item 9, ordinances. Item 9A, consideration and possible action on an ordinance concerning a request to amend the official zoning map from Interstate Commercial Zoning District to a planned development zoning district for approximately 14.93 acres, generally located west of Interstate 45, south of West FM 517 Road, and legally described as 4.13 acres out of DEDC subdivision number 1, 2015 Abstract 19 Lot 2, 3.08 acres out of Abstract 19 Perry and Austin Survey, part of Lot 174, 0 through 3, Dickinson Addition D, 3.1 acres out of Abstract 19 Perry and Austin Survey, part lots 167 and 174, 0 through 5, Dickinson Addition D, 1.16 acres out of Abstract 19 Perry and Austin Survey, RES H-2, 8 through 100, Dickinson Square Partial Replat, 2.73 acres out of Abstract 19 Perry and Austin Survey, RES H-1, 8 through 101, Dickinson Square Partial Replat, and 0.73 acres out of Abstract 19 Perry and Austin Survey, part of Lot 167, 0 through 6, Dickinson Addition D.
Move to approve in two.
There's a motion to approve in two by Councilman Simpson, second by Councilman Wilson. Discussion. Hearing none. Take this to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. There's been a request to remove item 10A by staff, so we will remove that, but we'll otherwise move on to item 10, action items for consideration. Item 10B, consideration and possible action concerning, consideration and possible action accepting a proposal with the Goodman Corporation for performance-based mobility improvement strategy, authorizing the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate an agreement for such services. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Wilson, second by Councilman Decker. We have any discussion?
Are we all ready for presentation, or?
I think we're good to go.
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item 10C, consideration and possible action concerning a resolution of the city council of the City of Dickinson, Texas, approving an administrative services agreement with the Dickinson Economic Development Corporation. Do we have a motion?
Move to table this item?
There's been a motion to table.
Second.
This is motioned second by Councilman Simpson. There is no discussion of a motion to table. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No. Motion carries. It is tabled. Item 10D, consideration and possible action concerning, I'm on the wrong one. Okay, no, item 10D, consideration and possible action concerning a resolution of the city council of the City of Dickinson, Texas, approving an administrative service agreement with the Dickinson Management District.
Move to approve.
There's a motion to approve by Councilman, I'm forgetting your name, Allison Brantley, second by Councilman Wilson. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take this to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries.
Abstention.
You can, it's a may vote, but, okay.
I can't.
Vote for it.
Yeah, you can.
No.
No.
No, he's-
He has thought of form, but you're good. So noted, sir. Item 10E, consideration and possible action concerning a resolution of the city council of the City of Dickinson, Texas, approving and accepting the amended bylaws of the Dickinson Economic Development Corporation, a state of Texas type B economic development corporation.
Move to table.
Motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Single by Councilman Decker. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Kevin Lynn?
Aye, I said aye.
Okay. Motion is tabled. Item 11, executive session, 11A, Texas Local Government Code, Section 551.072, consultation with attorney, discussion with attorney regarding contemplated slash pending litigation and regarding matters protected by attorney-client privilege. We will adjourn into executive session at 7:41 PM. Meet me.
Twenty-one, we have ended executive session and we will now reconvene in open meeting. There are no items to consider from executive session. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I was gonna say if we can make sure the minutes reflect that, uh, that, uh, Mayor Protam is, uh, is presiding over this last action item, that's all.
So that, the, the motion was from Councilman Wilson and the second was from Decker. Wilson and Decker. All in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.